I'd like to call the need to order tonight. Thirty seconds early. I apologize for that. I'd like to excuse John Dowd- or excuse me, John Wadowski. He will not be making this evening. He was not doing well tonight. And John Lawler has also called in to turn his state. So I expect John to show up here in a little bit and we'll move on. First item that's back to swing up. Any public comment? Any concerns? I'd like to bring up sitting down. If some, all speaking will be done from closing here this evening. I learned a good lesson last week or last month. And so all, all public speaking to the council will be done at that time. So if anyone would like to mention something, always take your name just for the record purposes.
I am Lady Schindler, Lady Resident of Daniel. I would like to request that we have copies of the warrants and any other materials that are going to be discussed in the meeting by special speakers or whatever, copies of them for us as we come in the door so we can follow along as issues are discussed.
Is that something we've done in the past before always? And is it not something that's been currently done?
Yes.
Any other comments from the public? We're on to item number two, which would be business licenses. We have no new applications, at least I'm aware of. So we have two renewals, which would be My Berry Home Preschool and Dr. Fixit. I have not heard any complaints or any issues on those that are new. We haven't had any complaints. Okay. We'll get, get, and I'll sign those afterwards. Anyone have any comment with regards to the places? Okay. Yes, I will take the motion to approve both of them, both My Berry Own Preschool and Dr. Fixit.
I move that we approve My Berry Own Preschool and Dr. Fixit for renewal on their business license.
We have a first and we have a second?
I second that.
And we have a second. Any discussion? On favor? Aye. May opposed? Business license is passed. Item number three, we'll move on to Town Ordinance DO-219-12-02A. Reappointing of Planning Commission. Any comments or discussion with regard to the resolution? The council? From the public?
Do we have the next, please?
Yep, I'll be reading that before we approve it. Yeah. This would be DR 2019-12-02A. Effective date, January 1, 2020. Short title, resolution, reappointing Daniel Town Planning Commission members for a four-year term to run from January 2020 to January 2024. Purpose, the purpose of this resolution is to reappoint Daniel Town Planning Commission members who have agreed to continue to serve on the commission and to agree to abide by the ordinances established by the town of Daniel Council and by the bylaws established by the Daniel Town Council Commission. Resolution, be it resolved and approved by the Daniel Town Council that the following persons, seat one, Gary Waite; seat two, Mark McAllister; and seat three, Pam Skinner, should continue to serve on the Planning Commission for another four-year term, which shall run from January 2020 to January 2024. Any other discussion on the resolution? Any discussion?
I'm not sure that Mark McAllister's name is correct. On the previous resolution for a three-year term, the third commissioner was Jay Banker, who was recently replaced by Brent Waterman.
Okay, we'll note that and find out if that is or isn't.
Yeah, so if Mark was just appointed two years ago, he should have two more years running. I'm also curious why applications weren't taken notice of openings on the Planning Commission.
If you'd like to talk, if you'd like to come up and just, each time we're going to talk, we're going to come up here each time. So it doesn't start getting like we had before. It will happen. So each, each discussion is going to start from the public to the council.
I don't, I did not notice any posting on a website or on the town website about the openings. Is there no intention of taking applications?
It was posted. It was also in the wave on June 26th and July 3rd.
This is December.
It was done clear back in July.
That's when we had the opening?
That's when we had the opening.
That was the opening for Brent Waterman's position. I mean, the replacement. But now you're reappointing commissioners who, as my, it is my understanding, can I ask you Pam, if you were contacted, if you want to serve another term for four years?
I was not contacted.
So you're saying that these people have agreed to serve another four-year term and yet you haven't opened the floor for other applicants? I'm just curious about the process. My guess is if Ms. Skinner was not contacted, chances are Mr. Waite was not either. And I think it's an error that Mark McAllister's term is terminated.
Okay, I would agree with what you just said. If those are incorrect, they need to be corrected. And so that will need to be looked into.
But on the reappointment and not saying we have an opening for Planning Commissioners, does it, is anyone interested?
You know, in the past, that's usually been the case. And sometimes we haven't had a lot of application. I would not know in that, planning application, why that is.
Okay, well, I'd like to state my objection. At the last meeting, there were quite a few new townspeople here that expressed interest in perhaps being on some kind of town board and to just not even open it up to them, I don't think is, is the correct procedure.
Okay, noted, thank you. Any other questions from the council or from the public? Questions and comments after, I believe that's my, that ordinance passed or not?
We have, we have.
We have a first and a second. We have discussions.
I thought I had a copy of the old thing that can't come up without too many pictures.
Do you need the previous?
Yeah.
Resolution from 2016?
No.
With that being said, we will note and take a look at that. Would the council like to move forward on this resolution?
Yeah, there's no harm in doing that because anybody that wants to resign, I mean, that's, that's clearly what happened in the middle of the year last year.
Okay, so we will use a resolution. And for those who would not like to join up and not be asked, then we will replace those folks with folks that would like to apply. Is that the way the council like to move?
So what you're saying is, is that if Pam does not want to move forward, Gary or Mark McAllister, if Mark McAllister is back, even supposed to be on here, if it's supposed to be Brent Waterman, then they'll just resign and then we'll reappoint somebody else and then we'll, I'm just a little confused.
I am too. I was bringing up an issue that may or may not be totally correct or may be correct or may not. So I would like to look into it.
Actually, and I don't want to bring up all of our things, but prior, the resolution wasn't even done for the other three. So we didn't get the resolution in time to do it. So we're catching up now at this point.
What other three are you?
On the last time, it was supposed to be the resolution that didn't pass. So we even missed the last resolution.
So can you give us a date?
Can I give you a date when the resolution didn't pass?
Well, I assume it was four years after appointment of the other three commissioners, if I understand what you're saying.
So it'd be on the two-year.
Right, so if this terminates at the end of 2019, that that would have been at the end of 2017, beginning of 18.
Right.
So there was no resolution then for three other members? So I'm, okay.
So we have obviously an issue with appointments and we're going to figure them out. And you brought it to light, so.
Actually, that was brought to light by our clerk of matter.
Excellent. Good job, Barry. Appreciate that. Noted, if the council doesn't have any more questions, Chair will entertain a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes for DR 2019-12-02 with notes taken to make sure that things are correct in regards to individuals and time.
Um, just, can I, can I? I just, Pam Skinner, that I am interested in still serving the town if that saves a step in the process.
Maybe somebody assumed you did. I don't know on this avenue.
I do. I do. I do. So there you go. Okay, thanks. Four years go by very fast.
They do.
I had no idea.
It does, and we really do got a great Planning Commission.
What's that?
We have a great Planning Commission, truly good. It works good.
Baby stepping forward, trying to fix.
Oh, no, no, we're a little down.
It's a process.
Yep.
And we'll move on to item number four, Town Ordinance DO-2019-12-02B. Appointing a Board of Appeals. I'll read the date and then we'll open up for comment if such needs to be. Number will be DR 2019-12-02B. Effective date, January 1, 2020. Short title, resolution, appointing Daniel Town Board of Appeal Members for a four-year term to run from January 2020 to January 2024. The purpose, the purpose of this resolution is to appoint Daniel Town Board of Appeal Members who have agreed to serve on the Board of Appeals and have agreed to abide by the ordinances established by the Town, Daniel Council and by the bylaws established by the Daniel Town Council Board of Justs. Resolution, be it resolved and approved by the Daniel Town Council that the following persons, seat three, Adam Knight; seat four, Ryan Simpson; and seat five, Charlie Brown, to serve on the Board of Appeals for another four-year term, which shall run from January 2020 to January 2024. Does the council have any questions amongst themselves? Public have any comments or issues?
Is three the goal for the Board of Appeals?
There's five. It would be Chris and Renee would also be on there. Their, their seats have continued to be on there. With them there, the chair will entertain a, yes, entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion as municipal resolution DR 2019-12-02B. Resolution, appointing Daniel Town Board of Appeals Members for a four-year term to run from January 20, 20 to January 2024.
We have a motion to approve DR 2019-12-02. Second?
Second.
First and second. Any discussion amongst the council? Done? All in favor? Any opposed? Now, item number five, Heber Valley Airport Advisory Report. I'm turning the time over to Stephanie. She's been kind of telling us all how she got where she's doing, what she's doing now and bringing us up to date. It's a new position.
Yes, it is. The good mayor appointed me to be the Community Advisory Committee for the Heber Valley Airport, and I'm looking forward to that. It's about a two-year commitment for me, 18 months to two years. So I'm going to just give a little bit of outline of what I've learned from that first meeting. And, and in the future, I will report after, after our meetings at the next town meeting. Okay? So, and I do have some information and we're going to put some information also on the website, which I've given to Mary. So we had our first meeting on 11/14 and it was a joint meeting with the Technical Advisory Committee. And it was our first meeting and it was basically a meeting 101, just to kind of give us an outline of what we're going to be doing and what the plans are. So I'm on the Community Advisory Committee and it's made up of a large group of people in the community. And we're going to act as sounding boards and information exchange group for local representatives. We also review the planning team's plans and proposals and we interact with the planning team members during the review. And we give its recommendations on the finished plan to the city, which is Heber City. We also provide insight and guidance regarding the community's reaction, criticism, and wishes for the airport development as it relates to the greater community. The project overview is to ensure the creation of an airport master plan. That includes ample stakeholder input. The airport master plan will be prepared in accordance with the current federal regulations, policy, and guidance. The airport master plan update will consist of three primary sections, the inventory and forecast, the creation of alternatives, and a selection of the preferred alternate, alternative, and the preparation of final documents. Heber City is the sponsor, with Heber City as the sponsor, with input from the community and its advisory committees will determine the preferred alternative outcome. In each major step of the process, a public representative or workshop will be held. Five are currently planned for the next year. And the TAC, and the CAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, and the CAC will review and provide input prior to presentation of project components to the public. So the first public meeting is going to be in January and that's just going to be another 101. We haven't come out with that, with the date on that meeting yet. And then we'll meet, meaning boards, the CAC and the TAC in March and in May. And in July, there'll be a, there'll be a review meeting and then the next public meeting will be in late July. And then future meetings, I'll update you guys in the, in the future on those. There is a website that has been launched and it's hebervalleylightpath.com and that's going to be on our website. Okay? And that's going to give you, the features that are, that's going to include are the events calendar, so you'll know when all the meetings and the committee meetings, what they're going to be, project updates, and they're going to share meeting summaries, next steps. And then there's going to be contact us page. And from my understanding, if you guys have questions and any concerns, there will be people answering all of those emailing you back. Okay? So anyway, that will be on our website, that web, that webpage.
Great. So as far as the meetings and things, are we going to, you're going to be able to be able kind of liaison, if people have issues, you can take it to them and/or bring it back?
Absolutely.
And try to make a positive connection and they themselves having to call the airport or something?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any questions?
On our website, we'll kind of be on the front page or off to the side. What are you thinking?
I'm going to have to get with Chris to try and figure out what the best options are.
Where a good spot is, so gain our attention.
I think it's really important to our community.
Yeah, because otherwise it gets lost.
It needs to be like, yes.
Yeah, Stephanie expressed it well, that it'd be nice if it kind of caught, caught the eye. I look at the website. I don't know how many people do, but.
It's just a matter of trying to figure out with him where it's going to be the best place for it.
Maybe you'll give us some feedback on that discussion at the next meeting? Or somewhere on what, your discussion with her or Pam?
I'm hoping maybe by the end of the week to try and have it figured out to see where we can place it first.
Cool, thanks.
Is that meeting in January, that a scoping meeting?
That's going to be a public meeting and it's just going to give an overview of what the plans are for the next 18 months to two, two years, to 24 months.
And what's the date again?
I don't think that they've come up with it. I looked at the site yesterday and I didn't see it.
Okay.
Yet. They just launched the website last week.
So a question for you. Where do you view it often, the website? Do you think it would be best to just have the hyperlink to take you to that page? What's your feeling?
Define often. For me, hyperlinks work really well, just to, but it'd have to be big enough to catch my eye. Because, you know, a lot of websites have so much information on you, you're just like, ah, just shut them down. So you could say, I know, airport information, call it whatever you, what the appropriate term is. And I think it'd be cool if you just went right to the hyperlink.
And I hope I represent you all well.
Okay, appreciate it.
Mike Duggan, in the chair creature of the Airport Advisory Report at the moment for the next, at least a couple of months. And getting ready to start this process in January is going to be pretty hot and heavy. It's a 144-page federal document. And I just called Stephanie last week and said, would you like to sit down and look at some of these documents? Because they're, it's pretty, you know, it'll take an hour and a half, two hours to go through it. The 144 pages on the master plan, there's a 360 page on airport design, which we're going to be getting into right away, assuming that they, that the town, the city council makes a move to change the arc or the letter designation of the airport. So that, that decision comes pretty early in the process. It comes about June or July. Because a lot of the other process, processes involve National Environmental Policy Act. And so you have to have a no action option. It can get pretty complicated pretty quickly. But the fact of the matter is if you're looking at stuff like, say, a 65-deciibel contour line, you have to have the center of the airport. Well, if the center of the airport is going to move, you can't do the 65-deciibel contour line. So the decision on whether to move the thing and upgrade, it happens pretty early on in this process. So anyway, I was going to get together with Stephanie sometime in the next week or so and just go through this stuff and talk about how pilots make decisions or not and what the decision, the city council can make or not. Hour and a half, two hours, probably meet at the library or someplace of anybody's choosing. And if somebody else wants to come along and ask questions, they're happy to, be happy to do that. It just takes a while to look at the documents, go through them and look at what we're going to be dealing with. So it's going to be pretty intense. It's going to be a lot of pressure on the city council. The master plan itself, they said they could do it, I think they said 18 months. That's going to be, that's going to be pretty tight. There's a lot of, a lot of technical stuff that you have to, a lot of it's boilerplate, but they still have to do it. And so that's going to be squeezing it in. But the, the master plan itself is 90, $590, almost $93,000, $140,000 of which is public relations firm, Aviatric. So you're, you can stand by to be, I'm frankly just going to kind of hide in the corner and get a good seat and see what they're going to do for $140,000. It prevents me that this big airplane is, that's rattling my windows is in fact prosperity arriving in town, but anyway. As long, anybody who'd like to join us, you're welcome to though.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mary.
I'll call you, Mark.
For being the airport creature, heck creature.
Well, it was interesting because they did say that they're, you know, and I'm not an expert on airplanes by any means, but they're like the, is it the global?
Global Express.
Express. And so I was talking to a pilot I knew after the meeting and I said, what's a global express? Because he's a SkyWest pilot and he goes, oh, they're about our mid-sized planes. So anyway, that, that was interesting and that we, you know.
Different category than commercial, I take it.
Yes, and they also said that, you know, Heber does not want to go commercial at this time. Good.
Anything else? Thank you. Let's take care of item number five. Item number six, that's probably just come up to my attention with regards to that.
Haven't had any action at all?
Move on to item number seven then. Daniel Municipal Water. So we'll talk about just the municipal and, you know, Gary hasn't been here for a while, so we'll turn the time over to you, Sherry. Anything that?
Everything's going good?
Good. It's pretty short and sweet. You don't get that short, sweet answer, so it's good to hear. Anything on, with regards to Stormhaven at all? Any, any other issues other than, anything new that's different than what's been? I mean, I think we've been pretty quiet for the most part.
Yeah, every, I think all the, I've been keeping track of all the, what, chemical thing, you know, testing and they're all coming through. Everything's still going good. They're passing, everything's looking good, unless Ryan knows something different. I'd say I think everything's quiet.
Since we got the new well online, it got a lot quieter.
It is, it's nice. It's very nice.
It doesn't all up to date and so that's a good thing. Thank you. Six, seven, and eight.
Just, just before we leave, item number eight. Ryan, I saw a letter come through that wants us to get testing done on Stormhaven well number two, but they had us disconnect that.
Permanent on well number one?
One.
They've asked us for well number two.
Okay, so we do have a different testing regime since well two is a new source. We have increased testing, so we have to do more stuff quarterly for the first 12 months because it's the new source, they want to make sure. And so there have been a number of letters that went out about additional testing for, for that well. And then assuming they all come back clean, that'll decline over time to become like our other sources.
Okay, so it'll spread out.
So that won't be permanent. That's, with any new source, they monitor a lot closer the first 12 months to see if anything pops up.
So on our other well, are we still required to test it?
So which, so we have, you mean the other Stormhaven well?
Yeah, right.
So we've declared that one as inactive, so no, we're not testing that one at all right now.
Okay, that was probably what this data was indicating.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of things here about well one, is what we're calling the old well at Stormhaven. And so yes, the different databases are confused about the status of well one.
Okay.
Efficiently, well one is offline and we are not testing.
Yeah, that's why we took the pictures of it all disconnected.
That's why, yeah.
And there have been a verbal on that as far as?
No, we have it in writing, but then we still get letters from, we have it in writing from over here. Over here, we still get letters in writing. It'll all work out.
And Lynn still gets water and Mike and, they're still getting letters. How do you get out of those systems?
All right, and I thought it was weird that they'd make us disconnect and require a test. I'll get my case out, so. Okay, it'll work out. That's why we want to hear.
I think we replied that we can't test it, it's disconnected.
Okay. I think we're about seven and eight. Approval of any council meeting minutes for November 4th, 2019. Councils had a chance to read those or had any questions or comments or implications? And the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Okay, I make the motion. We approve the November 4th, 2019 minutes of the Daniel Town Council meeting.
Okay. No, take your time, Bill.
I second that motion.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Missed approved for November 4th, 2019. Item number 10, Recorder's Office, warrants approval, announcements, and anything else? Mary, what kind will be this?
Okay. Comcast 99, DNA half thousand, officer rent 200. Smith and Harvickson for the trailer park. Walls and gebo's, 140790. Fabian Bangkok for federal Schultz case, 39,66870. Schultz State Case, 2450. Staples, this is for binders, tabs, dividers, 7329. Utah Local Government Trust, workers' comp insurance, 1340.94. TO Engineering for planning, 2005, 3125. Bangters, 120. Barrett's, 68550. Wits, 293. Lloyd's, 198, for a total of 46,66208. Public Works payroll hours, council payroll hours. There's no commission for total 54,8881. Daniel Municipal Water, monthly data charge, 4775. Heber Light and Power, 15202. Chemtech Ford for lead and copper, 28. And another testing for 20. TO Engineering for engineering, 31875. Sampling, 24880, total 81532. Payroll hours, 710, for a total of 1,052532. Stormhaven, Dominion Energy, 974. Chemtech Ford for lead and copper, 28. Radiologicals, 250. And coal rates for 40. Another lead and copper for 28. TO Engineering, 54875. Sampling, 46445. Lane Equipment, this is for the wage discrepancy, the repairs. And then, or the retainer of the 5,000 is 30,81050. the 5,000 is 30,8150, for a total of 32,17944, and then payroll hours of 350, for a total of 32,52944. On the Laying Equipment, I know we had talked about paying the wage of the $6,500. I don't know where you guys stand as far as wanting to pay the retainer, and then I think the...there's 11,605. I think that was one change order, and then there was another one for 7,67250. So that's where the 30,000 comes from.
I think depending on what adjustments may have gotten made with the other account, that these might, you know, all part of...it's all part of that grant money that...
No, this is not part of the grant money.
It is our portion of it.
This is in addition to that. Remember, we had the 6,000 on the Davis Bacon Wage issue that they had that came back. The retainer, though, the retainer shouldn't be paid until we get that money back from the state, because they held $5,000.
Yes.
And so we held it from their check until we get that from...because they said that would be the only leverage we would have if something was missing, and so we found out the wages were wrong.
That came in their mouth, the state, right.
Right, yeah. So we shouldn't be paying the retainer until we get that from the state, right, Ryan?
Correct.
Okay.
And so we should have one more check coming from the state shortly, and then we'll pay that retainer along with second invoice and close the project out.
Okay. So the 6,000, is it on...we approved to do that, is this where it's being...on this warrant is where it's coming out of?
Yeah, just to get the approval. So we just need to...I just need to know whether or not you want the whole thing paid, a portion of it paid, you want just the retainer withheld?
Yeah, the retainer's the only thing in question, I think. Everything else is...
Five thousand.
Yeah, everything else is all complete.
Okay. Any other questions, this council? Motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the November 2019 warrants.
Send a second paper?
Oh, just a front page there. Oh, well, they're presented December 2nd, but they were the warrants for November, right?
Correct.
Oh, sorry. I make a motion...I'll stop and start over. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the warrants for November 2019, presented December 2nd, 2019, and to approve the payment of the Laying Equipment, but withholding the $5,000.
Thank you. We have a first?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Warrants approved. Thank you. Counsel, really need to go to the possible post session this evening? I don't think so myself, unless there's something else.
Yeah, I think I send everything out to the council members, incoming council member, so everybody should be up to speed with where we're at. It's just a slow process going through the court with what we're doing.
Without that need, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Are you kidding?
So moved.
We have a motion.
It's my second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I never got one down that bad.